Recording it for posterity. Thank you.
6:02.
Good morning, everybody. I'd like to call the October 23rd, 2023 meeting of the Hampton Board Selectmen.
I record.
Order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're broadcasting from the town hall because we do anticipate that we'll be rolling right into the advisory hearing here at 7 o'clock. So we are broadcasting over Zoom and recording the meeting. Is there anybody else recording it? Dead? You're not recording? Okay. Don't blame you. All right. First thing on the agenda are minutes.
Do not have any today.
My gosh, there better be plenty next week.
Yes, I'm gonna catch up to sick.
All right, and might that be a stern warning? Bob, first thing on the agenda is the EV charging station decision.
I have been in touch with two owners of the parking lot at the mini mall. Also called Rediker several times. Have not had responses from any of these. Else have talked with the owner of Mountain View, and no interest there. That's where we are. The only location where there's agreement is the south best corner of the parking lot at the Senior Center. We looked at a couple of places also. Jerich Park, that probably is going to cause some unhappiness because of its taking parkland. And, you know, we looked at that green space between the police station and the Senior Center. That won't work because in the unlikely event that you'd have cars lined up, they'd have to line up on the street. So that, I don't think that works either. Where we are.
I mean, you had a grant to pay for this. When does the grant expire?
There is no expiration of the grant. Although, I will get a call tomorrow morning asking if the decision has been made. There is a limited amount of funding for this new initiative. The funding available to the town is $270,000. Two seventy-nine if you include the grant that we got from the Commonwealth. And I, it's hard to say how long it'll last, but I think, especially since National Grid put on that program two weeks ago, basically informing other communities in the region of the availability of these funds to do Level Three chargers. I have to think that they're going to see some efforts to cash in here, and I wouldn't want to wait, frankly, any longer.
So, all the expense would be covered by these grants?
It would not cost the town a penny.
And we would give revenue, but nobody has a real sense of what the revenue is?
No. What we would do would be to sell power
Right.
for which we would pay, who knows what we'll pay this winter, 20 cents, 25 cents? And we would decide how much we would retail the power for. Anyone wanting to charge their car would use a credit card. We would not have any expenses in that regard either. You pay for the power that you get typically with either a credit card or a cellphone app, and there would be a margin of some kind, which the town would have to establish. Some of it we would set aside for any kind of maintenance that would be required, and then there would be some kind of surplus, and we would make a decision as to what to do with the revenue. It could go into the general fund. If we were to put it at the Senior Center, I, you know, I think.
But it gets to, it's the town in the business of being a vendor like that. I mean, we're to provide municipal services to people. But are we in the business to, I don't know, be like a common vendor, really? Because we're also talking about, the potential is that the majority of people using it are out of town. So, we're like marketing, I don't know, I just don't.
Other communities, and they're probably around public.
Chairman, may I make a motion?
You want to have any discussion first?
No, I want to make a motion, then we can discuss it.
Okay.
I move the Board of Selectmen authorize the town administrator to take the necessary actions to engage Rise Engineering, consistent with available program incentives, to construct and install two Level Three EV charging stations consisting of four ports to be located at the Hampton Senior Center, Allen Street, Hampton, Mass.
I did speak with the director today.
Is there any second?
I'll second for discussion.
Here's my discussion. This first came to us on February 16th, 2021. We're now 30 months down the road, we're still on the same topic. If you go down, we've gone through every scenario that possibly is. The Senior Center makes the most sense because it's visible, it's safe, it's on town property, so we don't have to worry about sharing any revenues with, with, you know, businesses which they would expect to share, which is, you know, fair, fair to them. You know, we've gone down, you know, the three churches can't do it because obviously the Church of State is separation. Mountain View said no. The people at the mini mall can't figure out who owns what portion of land. And even if we put it in the back of Dunkin' Donuts, I guess it's going to be very expensive because they gotta go underneath the pavement for the run through with the wire. The Cumberland Farmers says they have a buyer, who knows. Garish Park is out. Town Hall employees don't want it anywhere near them. Police Department doesn't want it. So the Senior Center makes a thing, and I, and I, so it's an obvious place to put it. In addition to that, if we're going to spend a couple of million bucks to renovate the Senior Center and bring it to a modern facility, then that'd be a nice compliment, an EV charging station. Because I got news for you, that's where it's going. By 2035, we're all going to be all electric cars.
I did, by the way, talk to Rise Engineering about locating chargers in that large parking area near Dunkin' Donuts, and they said, "We can do it, but that will raise the cost because"
Yeah, they gotta go underneath the pavement.
"I don't like the trench under McCadam or Blacktop." They said they like other locations because they trench under grass, far less costly. Comment?
Yes.
That goes back to my question before the motion was, the revenue part there, that, again, same thing. We don't really have an estimate for what the revenue is.
No.
Because we don't know what our costs are. We don't know what we're charging. We don't know what the usage is.
I think.
Thank you. Can you autograph that?
We have a little delay.
Really? Yeah.
There would be a slow gain in terms of usage. I did learn that on the auto mile at Norwood on Route One, where they have, I don't know, a dozen dealers. They're selling 80 to 100 electric cars a day. And so, that's not the case around here, but clearly the wave is going to, is going to hit. And especially since the auto dealers are also reporting significant increases in sales.
I thought I just saw, though, that Ford, Tesla, and GM were closing down their EV production.
The truck thing did not go as well as, yeah. Are these strictly electric or more hybrids? They're strictly electric?
Yes, because the hybrid car self-charges when you take your foot off the pedal. So you, you don't have to charge a hybrid car. Although I think there are some cars where you have a battery where you do charge it. And when you, and it's a small battery, and when you run out of electricity, it switches over to a gasoline engine. Whereas a hybrid switches back and forth as you drive it between the two.
All right. I don't want to beat this up, and I think Don brings up a good point that, you know, and I love your graphic of the can and the kicking. Thank you for that and the email. Must have taken you hours to search for that, Don. 2:00 in the morning.
I don't think I saw that.
Yeah, well, you're lucky. But, but I do, and Craig, thank you for seconding after the discussion. Every motion that the board makes is worthy of discussion. Do we want to keep talking about it? Do we want to, because we have an agenda here?
I don't think we need, there's anything else to say.
I think we beat it to death, I will say.
The Senior Center makes the most logical sense because of where it is and proximity to everything. And it's town property, we own it.
There's that, but, you know, we are potentially changing it. If you look at the plans, the parking lot is changing. I think the characterization that they've been enthusiastic about having it there is incorrect. I've had numerous conversations with that, and it's more like, "Well, if you're telling me I gotta have it there, I guess I work for you and that's it." So, the personnel there.
Well, I spoke to the chairman of the Building Committee, and he said it's never been discussed at a building meeting.
Right, it hasn't. You know, they, they're not in charge of that part. It's been discussed at the trustee, sorry, the Board, Council on Agent Board meetings.
I called the director today to talk about several things, but I also said, "Are you still on board?" Because I don't know what the Selectmen are going to do tonight, but that you're still, I think, one of the options, and she said yes.
I had to say, I thought Craig suggesting Cumberland Farms was the best one, if we could get them off the dime. You know, talk about using, restoring a blight on Main Street.
I agree with that. Just, Bob reached out to them a second time, and they were adamant that this.
I talked with them on the phone. In addition, I got the email from them, and I called them and talked to them. And they're dug in on this. They said, "We actually have a buyer."
Did you talk to Jeff Parent? Is that you?
A woman named Gonzalez, who is now the point person.
No, I mean, Jeff Parent, the owner, he's, you talked about the hardware store also. Jeff is the owner of that property?
I haven't talked to him, no.
You asked me for his name, I didn't know, reached out to him.
Just for clarification, there's no out-of-pocket cost to the town for this?
None.
There's going to be no inflation or anything like that, or a charge level, I need for Level Three? As long as, as long as it's covered by the grant.
And reality is, I know several places, public properties, where they have in fact installed these on the promise of no out-of-pocket cost for the community, and that in fact is, is the way it turned out. They put one in Beckett, for example. I talked to the town manager there. There's two, apparently, in Munson, both on public properties. One in the library, I think, and one.
Operated by the town or under license to the town?
Yeah, I mean, it would be.
No, the ones in Munson.
Operated by the town or licensed? I don't know the answer to that, how they did it.
This one here, we won't have to do any billing or anything like that. It would just come back as a commission check.
There's no billing. There's no billing.
Billing, billing.
It's all credit card.
Right, right, but we don't, nothing would come to us and say, "Oh, you know, we have to pay out this to the organization, and then we keep this." They're just going to cut us a chip.
No bureaucracy.
The only thing, we have to set the prices. They're using our electricity price.
Correct.
We set the retail price, basically.
Yeah, the retail.
They're handling all the billing after that point?
Do that.
Just to clarify, it's the municipal price, not the residential price.
It's the municipal price, and whatever we decide. I've been looking around at what it costs, and I'm finding usually in the 40s, and there's one in the region here that goes to 50 cents a kilowatt hour.
For the retail price, basically, like?
That's, yeah, when you.
And you have no idea what they're paying on the other end?
I have no idea what they're paying for the wholesale cost of electricity.
So the markup could be this, it could be that, for all you know.
Actually, most owners do what I do, and that is, you know, you've got cellphone app, and you walk up, and there's, you know, you have the screen, looks like an iPad, tap it, plug in, it's that quick.
Fancy. I'm still looking for a pump with regular, but okay.
At least a 350 a gallon.
Nice. All right, let's see, we're at 6:17. Let's kick this along. So you've made a motion. You seconded it for discussion. Discussion over?
Yep.
Okay, fine. I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of empowering the town attorney, hang on.
Town attorney.
Sorry, town administrator to do what Don said in his three-line motion, copies of which will be mailed. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Opposed. Motion passes. You're on, you're on board. All right. Next on the agenda, DEP water testing mandates. This is more of an update, Craig, I was hoping, from you to see.
I don't have any updates from DEP other than what I presented last week with the potential homes. We did meet with Time Bond today, the Water Commission, about the water district expansion, and we're, have questions if this is going to fall into that.
I did put the documents in the, for tonight's meeting. Documents that we got today.
From Time Bond, yeah.
From Time Bond.
So, and I believe Bob and I are going to reach out to Dan Hall later this week, just to get a little bit more clarification on the DEP's mandates, if it's a one-time deal or not.
Okay. Again, the unfortunate part is that it's so late in the game, close to town meeting. And really get back to, we didn't have any sense in a prior conversation with Dan that this potentially could be an outcome, and we could have been a little more proactive?
We're going to have the testing done. If there are no traces of PFAS chemicals, then I think it's fair for the town to ask, are we going to continue, do we, are, will the mandate continue for testing? If in fact we see traces of PFAS chemicals, chances are, they will continue the mandate.
Well, we tested 10 places already, of which the majority had no traces.
Correct.
And we still are being told to continue testing, so I don't think that's a projected outcome.
That's only because those 10 homes are part of the original agreement that dates back to 1999.
But they have taken tests off the testing mandate for other things over the lifetime of the closure. There have been things that were in the original testing thing from DEP, like you said, 20 years ago.
Right.
That have disappeared because they had no.
But this one's not disappearing.
No, but there were some that had zero.
But we still have to test those residences, though.
I know. So to say, the other ones are going to be disappearing.
Well, one of the, one of the residents, the way this happened, one of the residents was, who has an adjacent property, came in very unhappy, saying, "I don't know what's in my water supply. Why didn't DEP require testing of my property?"
Originally or now?
No.
Well, you might say that.
Originally. And I said, "I don't know."
Right.
I pick up the phone and called Dan Hall, and he unloaded on Dan Hall. And they talked about, they, Dan said, "I'll get back to you in a week. We'll take another look." Dan then called last week, Tuesday or Wednesday, and said, almost apologetically, "We've decided to include these additional properties."
Right, but only for the PFAS part. You're saying that this neighbor said, back in the 1990 closure?
Oh, no, no, no. No, I'm sorry. No. When he learned of the PFAS testing.
Right.
He's in, he's in a butter to one of the tested properties. He wanted to know why his property was excluded. He was, he said, "I have children, and I'm worried that these chemicals can be in my water supply." And so that's how this began, at least, and.
Okay. Well, informative. We'll have more coming forward, right?
Yeah.
Policy for town hall again last week, and I asked you before about, do we get outreach to other boards? And no, not every board and committee meets every week. So it could very well be that, for instance, who I know is a park and rec meeting tomorrow night. The only meeting with us, I believe. Where are we? Policy.
Which one?
Which one? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I was talking about.
Yeah, I did give you a sample. It may be more elaborate than we need here, but.
You talked about the, oh, sorry, let me go, I was jumping ahead to vacancies. The public use of town hall or tournament, Academy Hall, speaking to, and I think it would share with you that the, the one I got back from the Senior Center, talking to Becky today, it actually dates back, she thinks, before her time, because it came back from Kathy Damaris, you know, which was before my time either. So, I think there was something out there, because I recall numbers. It could be that it was discussed, and it felt that this would not be an appropriate place for renting out. But there has been discussion. So I think it does need something that, if you have something, I mean, this is a town building. Should it be available for usage by town people? Sure.
The sample that I provided was a three-tier sample. A town, if town government bodies have a right to use it, no charge, simply get on the calendar.
Is this the one you found?
That's, that's the one I, I.
Sample, he said.
Gave out, yeah, the sample.
We already, we already had the three-tier system. There was a tier A, tier B.
Yeah, right.
For instance, like the Girl Scouts are a certain tier.
Yeah.
The, basically, town boards are the top tier, things like that, so this.
I think the, the point is, there's no policy for this building, so that's what Bob was trying to.
No, I want to say, this is the one that was in place, or you created this?
No, I created it.
Then you didn't find the one that was already there?
No. Now, it may simply have existed, and it wasn't put on the website when the website was developed.
But it still be, should be.
I haven't been able to find, so I, policy that.
I believe Pam was in when I was talking to Lauren earlier, and she said they, she had no recollection of one ever being available for the town use.
She was talking about the rental one. And I know that we have the other one because I recall the discussion. As you know, I'm involved with the Theater Guild, that they were clarified as, I think, tier B. Like the Scouts, like the, you know.
Right.
A defect, well, quasi-town type use.
Yeah.
Valley Riders, which use Academy Hall quite a bit, things like that, garden, you know, so to speak. Must wear a patina of being associated with the town. I like that, huh? Thank you. Thank you. So I think we can do some, I can do some looking for that, because that's been there before, and there was actually.
I think that did be something, after all the.
I think it went all the way through A, B, C, D type thing, so.
So what's wrong with recreating something now based on what Bob found?
Nothing, I'm just saying, why redo the work? I'd like to see what was out there before, and how it coincides with what you're creating now. I thought we were strictly looking for the rental agreement, and realized you're looking for the tier classification.
Right.
Right.
So do we want to authorize Bob to go ahead and, if he doesn't find it, work to put a policy together and present it to us?
Bring it back next week, but please reach out to me tomorrow and ask me to look for that for you, because I know I can find it.
Okay.
Okay. Didn't know you were doing that, and probably could have helped you out.
I mean, probably could have assumed we were doing that, right?
No, because we were talking strictly about the rental part. I didn't know you were looking into a tier classification thing.
Well, how do you rent out if you don't know what classification is? I mean, they go hand to hand.
No, the rental part has to do with pretty much an organization coming in that has nothing to do with it. We were talking about, Joe down the street wants to know if he can rent the thing. It had nothing to do with, if there's a awesome place like, you know, "Oh, you run the Boy Scouts or something." I could have helped out with that.
My point is, if you're going to rent it out, you should probably know there's a.
Sure.
A tiered system for it. So if we're talking about renting out the facilities here at Academy Hall, then we should assume that we're talking about, okay, Group A, Group B, and Group C, it's all.
Right, and we can find that, so. I do. Now, the elected vacancies. Just to my point, you know, some boards don't meet every week. We have a joint meeting tomorrow night, to meet with the school. We can talk about that later, but hopefully they'll be able to bring that up. Do you know if that's on their agenda to discuss, memo from the Selectmen?
I don't remember the agenda offhand.
Okay. And I'll make sure with Joanne, I think that's on the agenda for their meeting on Wednesday.
Well, I'd like to make a motion.
Good, okay.
I move the Board of Selectmen adopt the elected board's registration, resignation, and filling of vacancy policy as presented, and further be distributed to all elected town officers, elected boards, commission, and take effect immediately upon the option. And my reasoning here.
A second for discussion.
And my reasoning here is that, A, it's the law. B, it doesn't, it is, there's nothing in there that is, that takes any power, authority, or anything away from any board. It just sets a procedure so we don't know what to doing. The clerk made, the town clerk responded and makes the argument that it complies with the law, but she thinks it may delay deployment. Well, I don't believe the legislature, if you read the law, I don't believe the legislature's intent was to pack a board as soon as it can. What their intent was, they have an open process because they're elected offices, and people should know what's going on. That's why they have a two-tier system, where you file with the clerk first, the clerk notifies the two boards. Then the other, the remaining, the board with the vacancy has 30 days. Notify the Selectmen that they want to fill that vacancy, and that gives them an opportunity to look for someone or, or to think about it. And then, because they want to have it open to the public and everything, the extent, the time of the posting of the meeting is extended way beyond with the open meeting laws. Open meeting law's 48 hours, and here they give seven days, so. So I think it's a pretty simple thing. It's just a way of getting everyone on track so we do the same thing. It's like a punch list. When someone resigns, this is what we're going to do.
We'll say the part, and I think you clarified this before. You talked about the, after one week's notice, that's not a given, that's a minimum.
That's a minimum.
Right, exactly. It could be two months to get somebody. I think that's what we need to clarify, like, you know, there's not a. Look how long it took to get people interested for some of the other things, you know? We have the Board of Assessors coming up, and you're not going to find an assessor quality person.
It's going to be a tough one.
Right.
That's, that's a minimal.
Yeah, I want to be clear about that. I did ask it when we discussed this before, that it felt the jointly announcing the vacancy stuff led to some like, well, who's doing it? And it felt, and I asked you before, I felt the board that has the vacancy should do the announcing. The board of, we'll say, assessors is announcing that they have a vacancy, interested parties shall reach out to such and such or whatever, rather than our board.
Right.
And I thought that was.
I thought you, I thought we made that change, or you talked about making that change.
Yeah, but it's not.
I might, I might not.
I think I said it two weeks ago when we talked about this, that the mass law is, looks purposely vague.
It is.
In order for probably towns to create their own policy of how they see fit following the law, so.
So far, the town clerk is, is the only response. I guess we'll hear from the planning board.
That's okay. And I'll make the point too, and I think I said this back when we were talking about zoning bylaw changes at the town meeting. These are not in granite. If somebody comes back and they got a good valid idea for a change, I'm sure the board is receptive to, you know, tooling it up. Let's get it out there. We'll put it in place right now, and if something needs to be changed, we'll vote to change it, right, Don?
Yeah.
Yeah. Things grow.
Democracy.
So, with that, with that.
Speaker.
Yeah. With that change, a less pro vote. With the paragraph, this one here, that it shall be the board's responsibility, the Vacants Board's responsibility to get the notice out.
Okay.
Yeah. You seconded it for discussion, and I'll call for a vote with that change. Of paragraph two, the Board of Commission with the vacancy shall do the announcing.
Which way? Are you voting all in favor first?
Yeah. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Did you?
Boy, what a night. No, I voted yes.
Okay. Didn't see your hand go up, so that's all.
That's because we're holding the paper. You're, you're the freemound. Okay, emergency, we're just cranking here tonight. Installation of the generator. Should it be oriented toward the north or the south? And I appreciate your interest there, Don. Chief, just a quick, you want to give us an update on where we are with the generator installation? It's arrived, right?
Yes, it's on location.
Okay, good. How many KW is it? 50, thank you.
So your question is just another.
What's the problem? Where are we now?
The, we, we're, I talked to the Building Commissioner, who reached out to Electrical Inspector, and they both had some questions. They provided me with a permit, a building permit and electrical application. I reached out to Electrician, but we wanted to make sure the site was where it was going for a cost of wire. I think what we need to do is figure out if this is a, going to be a critical operation installment, or it's going to be a replacement for the generator. I don't know if the board has authority to do it or not, but if they could rule it as not a critical operation for now, we could get the new generator in and running. not a critical operation for now, we could get the new generator in and running. And then on expansion or renovation of fire department, then we can integrate it into the critical operation role.
What's the difference? What's the difference?
Yeah, why wouldn't the other one be more immediate? Seems like if it was critical, it seems like that would be-
Well, so, so there's several things that go into it and it would have to be, so, when the building commissioner asks for a drawing, pretty much he wants to make a determination. And it's, and it's really something for him to hang his hat on. I have a lot of respect for the building commissioner and the logical inspector, but when you get into this, it provides a risk assessment needs to be done. And that's going to be done by an engineer. I reached out to MIMA, they didn't know anything about it. I asked our police chief, he didn't know too much about it. So, it would have to be deemed by someone higher, higher up than me. I'm willing to help out and install it, but as the head of department, if someone gets into this critical operation power supplies, it's, it's out of my hands as far as being fire chief.
So, if we do the regular install, we can get this done expeditiously?
If we do it like a regular install, if you, if the board deems that as it is a critical operations power supply.
Right.
But if you deem it as, let's get it up and running, and then as an expansion or renovation of fire department, then we'll integrate it into those plans to make sure it's done properly, which means it has to have a two-hour fire rating. It has to, you know, be wired in rigid conduit or MI cable. It has a lot of things that go with it being installed that way. The fence, as Don was asking about, you know, that's all part of that.
But I think when we started, this was replacing the other generator. I want to say, maybe I'm overstating it, but it was really getting a better generator than what you had.
I agree, we haven't had a generator in over a year and a half. So, it's been, it's been broken, there's no repair parts for it, it's outdated. This is the second or third hand-me-down to the fire department generator, so it is time to, to get a new generator for the fire department. However, the email came across as, does it require a fence as the police station does? And that's critical operation power supply.
I was just, I'm just having a drive by the police station size, I just wonder if we need to do that.
I, I-
We don't have one of your-
Here we're coming from.
We don't have one of your-
Everybody else.
But this building and this is, so to speak, a-
You're, you're absolutely correct.
The fence that's at the senior center one is more decorative than functional, if you will, just to hide the view.
Explain to me, critical operation as opposed to regular generator?
It's to any municipality that has to do with emergency contro, emergency operations, police stations, if you had emergency management office somewhere in the town hall, fire departments, critical life, you know, safety, hospitals of that nature, anything that could happen. It became after 9/11, Homeland Security came up with these laws and rules to-
So, what do you think we should do? It's a big generator.
It is a big generator. I'm glad you asked the questions that you do, but I'm still looking to get emergency power backup to our fire department quicker than later, sooner than later. That's why if the board will deem it not, if, and you would have to check with the building commissioners, see if this is even allowable. If you could deem it not a critical operation as of now and replacement, we could get it in, but I, by all means, when the renovation's done, it should be-
Upgraded.
Wired as so.
Okay.
Sorry, if it was deemed critical infrastructure now, what would be the holdup from getting it installed? It would have to be a different installation method?
So, so part, there's, there's a lot, there's a lot to that code article.
Like cost too?
So, the transfer switch, the panels would have to be in a locked closet, they're not accessible to any, except personnel, authorized personnel. The rigid pipe underground, two-hour fire rating for the cables supplying it, feeder supplying it. And, and then, and then, you know, the fence you talked about, making sure it's in a secure area where no one can, you know, tamper with it. So, those are the main things. I'm sure there's a lot, a lot more to it, but, but those are the main concepts. I mean, right now, the transfer switch is in the front room by the radio, it's probably pretty far away from the generator, so we'd be looking at a pipe run of MI cable, which is, has a fire rating for feeders.
I can go back to just what I said. This was, in my thought, envisioning a replacement of the generator that was old, hand-me-down from fire, from highway, or the school, or wherever the last one came from. You know, so we thought we were just replacing through a grant and putting a new generator in place, in my mind. So, I think we should be focusing on that type of thing. If in the future, during a potential expansion, you want to upgrade it, as part of knowing where the control room is going to be, you don't even know where it's going to be, so how could you wire it to it and then change it later?
Well, this, this particular discussion we're having now escalated from the logical inspector having a meeting, a separate meeting with the Kingsley salesman that I wasn't invited to. So, that hearing about the information that came out of that, him reaching out to possibly the electrician that would wire it, I've gotten this information back that I'm sharing with you now.
You've done a lot of emergency management stuff, what do you think?
I, personally, I think it should be part of critical infrastructure. Because it's the, the, the security of that building if something were to happen. I understand the concept though, that, you know, this is replacing something that was outdated and broken, so we should get it up and running as soon as possible, so.
And come back with an amount maybe as to certify it as critical? What would it take to turn it over to critical after it's up and running? Could that be done afterwards?
I think you're doing double the work then at that point because you're installing it a certain way, and then if you're upgrading it to a critical infrastructure, then you have to go back in and redo what you just did, right?
Potentially, but I'm wondering, are we also playing a little bit, I mean, playing with fire, that we have a, more part of our emergency management system that has no backup at this point?
I think if we took the, kept the distance for the generator and did some wiring methods that met the critical operation power supply, that, that would be less we'd have to do. And then maybe move that transfer switch in a renovation for the fire department closer to the generator, so that, that would take that whole long-
So, you could bring it, bring it into compliance with some work down the road.
Yes, and that would have to be up to the architects and engineers. It's, it's beyond what I could scope work I could provide for a town.
So, right now, the building has no backup generator?
Correct, we're using a portable generator that the fire department owns, wheeled out just like a residential type, you know? Minimum, minimum supply, power supply.
Run the doors and the-
Lights, doors and radios and lights.
You think we need to have a conversation with, with Kingsley or who does these things?
I would, I would have a conversation with the building commissioner and electrical inspector and start there, if you're, if it's in your jurisdiction to, to move forward with the replacement.
Right. So, we should get them.
And I don't know if we, we need something in writing saying that going for, you know, after-
Yeah. They don't want to poo-poo with their opinion, obviously they're trained professionals. If the board went the non-critical way, how long would it take to get in place?
Depending on, you know, the contractors. I did talk to Mark Legonier, Highway Superintendent, he said he would help out with the trenching and help out with forming the pad, concrete pad. So, I'm going to say maybe three to four weeks complete.
Well, that's the, and that's the, no, I'd say the simple way, but the quicker way is three to four weeks.
Well, we wouldn't be working on it for three to four weeks, but I think with the-
I mean, getting an electric-
Yeah.
That.
Yeah.
Gets you into the, I'll say, start of, the start of the winter season.
Well, I, I would, someone, probably myself, would still have to provide some kind of drawing to the building commissioner.
Fair enough.
Stating the distance. If it's too close to a building or dwelling or structure, then, you know, we have to raise exhaust pipe for it. So, there's, there's several things that play, play into installing a generator.
All right, so we want to invite them to our next meeting or charge Bob with getting together and moving along quicker? I mean, Wendell's in every day, Bob could see him, you know? Would you have the ability, availability to meet with Bob and Wendell? I know you got a job, you know, later in the day on Sunday this week?
Yep, absolutely.
And then, if needed, we can put the agenda for next week, start the ball. I don't want to keep kicking things down the road, Don.
Make a note.
Make it so, Captain. What do you think?
Is, yay. That's the meeting before a special town meeting, is that?
Yeah. Well, I'm saying if you can meet this week and then if it needs to come back to us, we can talk about it next Monday.
Okay.
Right? If some formal action needs to happen from our board, right?
Yeah, we're, you know, we're getting into the time of year where it's getting cold, so.
Yeah. Brown's going to start getting hard.
Right.
Thanks, Ed.
Review. Version changes- Version 27. Timestamp these as well, I think.
Yes. The changes since you looked at this last, one of them is in Article 5, Community Preservation Projects. The new number for item B is 7,238-80.
Yeah, just to give the board an update. So, the CPA board had a meeting last week, and this includes certification of the fire escape as well, which wasn't in there, so. How much is that? 7,200 roughly.
And the other one would be Article 9, the brush truck, where the transfer of 34,000 is changed to 42-6. Otherwise, this is the same set of motions that you saw a week ago.
So, I was talking to Kathy Pessolano today. She didn't recall seeing a copy of these at this point. Have you been sentenced, keeping them in loop on the motions?
Yes.
Okay.
I sent the motions to the entire advisory committee.
Okay.
Basically, after talking with Doug, who pointed out that they're the ones that are going to be making the motions, that I said, when I sent it, it's more or less in your hands now, because they might make some changes to the motions.
I don't think that's accurate. I mean, they would make the motion on the, potentially the application of money to the tax rate and stabilization. I think typically the other ones have come from our board or any board that submitted a motion for consideration. And Doug's been around long enough, he truly knows that. Well, we're, 7 o'clock tonight, we want to hear the witching hour, what's happening in Auburn, right, Don?
Yeah, they got their town meeting, right?
7, right?
Yep.
Yeah. Lauren, I do want to welcome the former selectman's secretary to our meeting today. If you're looking for any advice.
I have a question. I'm very hard of hearing. Is it, is this as loud as it gets?
It's as loud as we talk, yes.
Is there any way I could move closer?
You want to sit next to Lauren and give her some advice on how to be selectman's secretary?
Can I do that?
Go for it.
We're actually, we're almost done, because advisory is going to be coming on at 7 and we're going to be moving off.
Okay.
So, we can whisper in your ear at that point. So, right now, we're going through the agenda and assigning motions. First motion is senior center architectural design, and I believe that motion is going to come from Don Collins. Fiber optic, Craig, I'm assuming that's you?
That's me.
Okey-dokey. Additional funding for the town admin, two different motions. Don, you want to split them? Which one do you want?
Just the first one for money?
Money. Well, they're both for money, but yeah, one's the search firm, one's the actual budget.
Just do both of them? I'll do both of them. How about that?
Wow.
Well, I mean, makes sense, like, three and four.
Maybe you don't have to sit up, yeah, get down, get up, get down. My age, 20 times. Hey, wheel them up to the mic. CPA, typically Doug, and I assume that'll be a combination of Doug and probably Connie. Okay, I think we could have Shelley make the next motion.
Will she do that?
Oh, sure. Land trust, I'm not quite sure if that would be Doug or Jennifer, maybe?
I think Jennifer made it last time.
Yeah. Okay, I'd be fine with that. I can do the tractor.
Who's doing Minot Truck? Jennifer?
We're assuming it's either Doug or Jennifer that came in from the trust last time.
Oh, okay.
Yep. I can do the tractor, brush truck, I guess can be the fire department, Ed?
Whatever you want.
Okay, then.
You don't want me to do it?
Whatever you want.
All right. DFIBs, well, it can't be Scotty. I guess I'll do that.
So, assuming the tractor is going to be Mark? Oh, you?
Mark doesn't live in town, he can't make a motion.
Okay.
Yeah. I'll do the tractor and the DFIBs. Eddie will do the truck. Master plan would be somebody from planning. Government study is Donna, I assume?
I got something today, their presentation, I think Eric is going to do it, not Donna.
Fair enough. I mean, somebody from the committee. Right, yeah. Ground, mountain, solar, can't be Kelly, it'd have to be one of the, I assume it'll be either Bob or Norm, somebody from the planet, from the assessors. Yeah. You okay with that? I mean, it could be us, but they would understand it better.
They would understand it better.
Right, yeah. Okay, and then the four-
Capital.
Capital requests. Are we comfortable with just having, I guess, Michelle do them, right?
Yeah, right. She's jealous.
Right.
Right, right.
Which, could be no action, who's the-
I guess, I guess one of them, they-
They recommended them?
No.
They're recommending them tonight at the thing. It said online that they are not going to make them until tonight.
They sent the thing out this afternoon. They're finding-
I saw his thing, I thought all of them said no, one said no?
Yeah, one said no.
Which one, do you know?
The cameras.
Cameras?
The cameras, the camera's security system.
I'm surprised. I thought Steve Hale made a pretty good point that you can barely identify anything with that camera, so. But I go back to Craig's point, that's very true, however, why isn't that in your annual budget?
Technology budgets.
Yeah.
So, who's doing the school capital?
Well, we assume it's going to be Michelle. I mean, should confirm with her if she comes in tomorrow.
Oh, depending on what they do tonight and what-
Exactly. Well, somebody's still making a motion, whether it's no action, somebody's still making a motion.
Yeah.
Tax rate, that's a great question. Again, I would ask the board to keep the agenda light for next, and that way we can sit down with the financial team prior to town meeting. See what some ideas.
That's the next annual.
You know, Dick has talked about it.
We'll have a one-hour meeting.
Well, and we might anticipate this will be a good 15-minute discussion about how[1675.51] Well, I anticipate this will be a good 15-minute discussion about how much you want to put one way or the other. You've already done some things from stabilization to reduce the impact on free cash. Dick is talking about potentially going to stabilization to fund the dump truck from last year, which will also lessen the impact on appropriations at the annual town meeting. So between those two, and then there needs to be a discussion from our board. What are you comfortable with? Right.
Okay, I have, I just have two that.
I guess my other question would be, Don, you would answer this. The money we just, and make a note that we did just get another rebate check from Action. Would this money be in next year's free cash, so speak, as part of general revenue?
Yes.
Or would it, so it does nothing for us this year?
We have two choices. Take a check, which then flows into free cash for next year, or use these funds to offset cost this year. That's more bureaucracy than.
Yeah, the check's already here, so.
A little more, yeah, a little more bureaucracy. So I just said, give us a check.
I'm more comfortable with the check thing because I think people need to know what the cost of the program is.
Right, right.
And you're artificially depressed, it looks, you're not.
Just two items that I think I missed, the De-Fibs. Are you doing that?
Yes. De-Fib and tractor.
And the other one was master plan. Is that going to be planning board?
I have your time up. You're up there for half an hour.
I'm going to be up there for a while.
Yeah, right.
Yes.
Time board, okay. I've got to anticipate being up there probably for 40 minutes.
Yeah, right, exactly. All right, okay, so that puts that to bed.
So the last two.
Who does the last two normally?
Is that the? Last two, the.
Advisory.
Advisory. The advisory committee will do Article 19 and 18, reducing the tax rate. Is that?
Doug, we just gave you two motions for the special town meeting. Congratulations. Let's see, we're coming up to the witching hour. Select correspondence, I think a copy of the planning board decision for the Facilious Common Drive Way. And just to give you a heads up, that came before me when I was on the planning board 21 years ago. Want to say this thing, drag on.
Finally decided.
Yeah, exactly. I'm happy I left. The check for Action, that's. I thought there were some other correspondence. Oh. Lauren?
Yes, Donna Hatch brought in ambulance.
Talked about that, yep.
Yep, you already took.
I think the significant part there is that the, FYI, the third year of our contract is less than, we bring less than the first year of our contract, I think. I think they've worked very hard at this and they've been pretty responsive to the town in providing service and saving us money as well.
All right. So we have the town administrator report.
Okay.
I'm sorry, quickly before you do that. So tomorrow night, we have a joint meeting with Parker Rec. I believe you said John and Aaron are attending, is my understanding?
I do not know who will be attending. I know the superintendent's attending.
John, okay.
Yeah.
All right. Is the board planning to attend? We are posted for.
I'm sure Aaron will.
I wonder down.
Okay.
I don't understand it, but.
Yeah, well, I've gone through history and I think I've shared that my wife used to be chair. So I asked her twice before they've had this joint meeting, when she was on the board. Once with the selectmen, once the selectmen came to them, and it's been, but this question comes up, she said, every 10 years.
What's the question?
The question is, how much control does the town have with the use of the building? Every 10 years.
Total control.
I know. Just making sure everybody's in a loop about it.
Bringing to the lease.
Yeah, right. So we'll put all the players. As parties change, you need to have this refresher course, if you will. So.
All right.
Good times. That's six o'clock tomorrow?
Yes.
Available on Zoom?
Yes.
Will we have a Zoom operator? News to her. Are you available?
To do it.
Yes, great.
Yeah.
Gosh, I'm working overtime this week.
Yeah.
How about Wednesday?
I need to make up, Wednesday I'm doing planning board.
Right.
Yeah.
Gosh, you have Thursday off, though, okay?
It's the week.
Okay, so quick.
Okay, so quickly, Tiger Case is at Palmer District Court on the 24th. I'll be there, town council will be there, and the ACO will be there, plus neighbors and owner. We do have a candidate for conservation agent and stormwater coordinator. We're looking to interview that person on Wednesday jointly with, I'll be there, and jointly with conservation commission members. Trying to coordinate that now. Okay, you know about that time bond, you know about that discussion we had today. There's the potential cost for the project. I still need a date for the ADA training.
I think it goes back to on that DLC thing. You talked about inviting the ADA committee.
Yes.
I think it'd be a lot easier saying the date. I mean, was that their suggestion or Rose's suggestion or yours?
Rose said that she had had a contact with the DLC and that they insist that we need to do it again.
I know, I know, we talked about that.
Yeah.
I'm saying bringing in the local ADA committee.
Yes, oh, yeah.
Suggestion was that.
Send a message to Becky, but we don't.
Don't know. Whose suggestion was bringing that committee in?
You.
I don't think so.
Yes, yes, yes.
Yeah.
No, because the problem we have, when you're setting this quick date, you have these volunteers who have met once in a year.
Yeah.
And if you're going to set that date, I think you need to set training another time. Becky has had obviously difficulty coming up with a date that's compatible with her enrollment training, things like that, so.
No, I mean, the last time, we did not include.
Exactly.
The committee.
Right.
I do remember. Anyway.
I mean.
Also, well, we went through ambulance oversight, 50,469 cemetery commission, advertising for a replacement, meeting of District 2 DOT on the 19th. We reviewed with them a wide variety of their initiatives, particularly with regard to bridges in town. And then lastly, the. We're all set with that, Al. Perennial EV.
I would tell you, Rich is in Thailand, so that's probably why he didn't get back to you. Call you back, collect. Okay, so you did, the link you put online for the hearing is a different link than our meeting, right?
No.
Okay, so it's our meeting link?
It's our meeting link, and I thought since they were coming here, we would just continue on. And I'll post it tomorrow so that people can hear the selectman meeting and planning board, the advisory committee, a portion of it.
Well, it's their separate meeting. It's their meeting, it's not ours. I mean, I'm happy to close our meeting, and I think it should be two separate recordings. Okay, okay. Because they're going to have to call their meeting to order, which they're quite prepared to do.
Why don't you just keep it running and I can split the video?
Oh, could you?
I can split the video file.
Okay, that'd be great.
It's simpler.
All right, we don't, we don't necessarily need to adjourn, but we'll leave the table and let them take over the table.
Do we want to stay up there?
I think I got us. So Doug, you're going to be on to help with the quorum, right? Yes, help with the call to quorum. Okay, yeah. Hey, hey, take your check. Oh, God, I got a check. Put that on. That made out to you personally?
Yeah, I'm going to stick it in.
Yeah, but the way you fix it is pretty nice. Please.
I've given you a copy of the Warren articles.
Yeah.
Just need one.
Where are they?
No. No, just need Doug.
Where are they?
The copies are right in front of John.
John, they're in front of you.
Copies?
Copies, yeah.
And any couple of copies needed?
No, I'm all set. I printed out.
I'll see if any.
Oh, thank you. Doug, you there?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Can you hear me?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
I can't hear you, Doug.
Can you hear me now?
I can hear you, yes.
Turn the volume up on the screen.
Yes. Because he's our quorum, so he.
I can unmute my computer, but it should be. How do you get him to have volume coming out?
I thought, can you hear me now?
Could be his issue with volume.
I don't think so. He's not muted.
Does that have to be turned on?
I think you need to turn the speaker up on.
Please give us one moment. We seem to be having some technical difficulties here. I know. I don't know how that works.
Can you hear me now?
Doug, can you hear me?
I, yes, I can.
Yes, but we can't hear you.
Okay, I'm unmuted.
You tried the settings?
Well. I'm on my phone.
Okay, now we can hear you.
What was the issue? Was it here?
On the phone.
Settings.
Oh.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, good, thank you. Yes, yes.
Okay, good. 150 years of collective education, we'll figure it out.
It's seven o'clock, so I'm going to call the advisory committee's public hearing to order, if you wouldn't mind. Myself and Mrs. Sheen and Doug with us via Zoom constitute our quorum. So there's three of us. I just wanted to put that out there, that he was called away for a few days. So I got the short straw, so I get to read the Warren articles. I would like to just remind people that this is a public hearing. This is not the floor of town meeting, where I'm sure many of your concerns, you would like to share, if you have any, with your fellow voters. So what we would like to do is to limit any conversations after I read the Warren article and the person or committee that sponsored the article. If there was any subsequent discussion, I'd like to limit it to five minutes, assuming that everybody agrees with that and doesn't have a problem with that. So having said that, to either of the constables of the town of Hamden and said county, greetings in the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, you are hereby required to notify and warn the inhabitants of the town of Hamden qualified to vote in town affairs to meet at Thornton W. Burgess School, 85 Wilberham Road, Hamden, on Monday, October 30th, at 7:00 in the evening, then and there to act upon the following articles. Article 1, funding for senior center architectural design. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from unappropriated available funds a sum of money to the Hamden Senior Center to fund architectural design for an addition to the Hamden Senior Center or take any other action relative thereto. I believe the dollar amount is $60,000. For those of you who may not have that information, is what the senior center is looking for. So I noticed that there are a few people here from the senior center. I'm not sure if anyone would like to speak in favor of the Warren article. Mr. Collins, please.
Don Collins from the town here, a member of the Hamden Senior Center Building Committee, which is composed of 10 people who were appointed by the selectmen, many of whom are here tonight. And anyway, we were appointed by the selectmen just over a year ago. The senior center council on aging of the board that oversees the senior center in 2019 requested of the selectmen that a study be done on the needs of the senior center building. As we say, we were appointed, the board of building committee was appointed by the selectmen, and anyway, the senior center building is just under 25 years old, and it's served the town very well. It's not only served the senior center, senior citizens of town, but it's also served the general population of the town. Like 10 years ago, there was a severe snowstorm and people lost power for several days. The senior center with their generator was open for 24 hours a day for several days and housed many of the citizens of Hamden. The current situation with the senior center is the programs have grown and that there are shortcomings have emerged in the building. There are renovations required to be done in the building after 25 years, and there are severe space limitations have become evident. Limited space, for instance, for health care and wellness services, which is a growing program with seniors. The need for a private confidential meeting areas is a severe shortage. Patrons come there to discuss food stamp assistance, fuel assistance programs, health insurance analysis and recommendations, nurse consultations, veterans' agents meetings. And as I said, we're running out of room in terms of their prime example of the shortage is the foot care program. If you go there for foot care, you meet the person who's giving you the service in the janitor's closet. Quite inappropriate space to give such a service. In addition, if you go there for the blood pressure testing program, you meet in the library, which might, you know, kind of inappropriate to meet there with whoever else is in using the library. So there's, in addition to the shortage of spaces such as that, there's a shortage of storage space. We all get the scribe and the paper, and in the scribe, you'll notice when you read it, there are 29 programs that are listed that are provided by the senior center. Some of those programs need more than once a week. In addition to those 29 programs, there are about 10 intermittent programs, which come up periodically. When they come up, there's no space available, so one of the permanent programs, weekly scheduled programs, has to be canceled in order to fit in these intermittent programs. So that's kind of the situation we're dealing with down there. So we need expanded space for programs, for future programs. The selectmen, when they gave us our charge, said, we want you to look at what are the needs for the center for the next 25 to 50 years, is what they were looking for. But at any rate, so we have met for the past year, twice a month, for about 12 months, and we've identified the needs going through, the needs of the building. We refined them. We've looked at alternatives and at options to come down with a final list of recommended needs. The next step is to award a contract for final design to an architectural firm. This article is to request $60,000 to award the contract for an architectural firm to work up the final design. We would appreciate your support on this project.
I do just have one question. I'm sorry, I was talking with my colleague for a second. Do you already have an architectural firm in mind, or do you have to put that out to bid?
We put that out and we have received proposals from some, we are positions, we make a recommendation to the selectmen.
Yeah, and, okay, and it'll be up to them to, I understand. All right. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Collins regarding the money that the senior center is asking for before we move on to Article 2? And I'm sorry, I'm sorry, please go ahead.
I'm sorry, Gary Weiner, also on the committee, but just for point of clarification, we put out for an RFQ for architectural services.
Okay.
And we received back out of seven, we received three, we have interviewed a couple of the consultants, and the $60,000 is in essence a phase one work effort on the part of the architect.
Right.
To get us to the point of a schematic and preliminary design. We've given the architect, or when the selectmen choose, if you will, and the architect, there's a very ambitious timeframe to get back and provide those schematic and designs to us in January. That then leads to the ability to propose a final architect and a final design for renovations and or expansion. I just wanted to be clear that it is not a final design.
Okay, thank you.
It is to get us through the schematic plan and or addition.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else? I'm sorry, I don't believe I introduced myself. I'm Kathy Passalano, and I'm just, Rita?
Rita, Bill.
I'm sorry, yes.
The motion in the Warren article, I would like it to, we initially wanted it to read, to fund architectural design. we initially wanted it to read, "To fund architectural design for renovation and expansion of the Hamden Senior Center." I don't want renovation to be ruled out.
Okay, that, since the selectmen are obviously in charge of the Warren articles, it would be incumbent upon them whether or not they want to change the wording of that article.
The motion. Can't do that, we can change the wording of the motion though.
I'm sorry, the motion, I apologize. So, your point's well taken, thank you. All right, anyone else? Okay, Article two, funding for the fiber optic program. "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, borrow or transfer from unappropriated available funds a sum of money to permit construction of a townwide fiber optic internet system or take any other action relative thereto." So, do you have copies of the Warren articles with the dollar amounts in front of you? So I don't, okay. So Greg or anyone who would like to speak to Article two?
Yeah, so this has been the program that we've been presenting the last two and a half years at town meetings. First with the establishment of MLP at two consecutive town meetings. And then a few other informational sessions at town meetings. We're now at the point now where we've done all the exploratory research and we've exhausted the grant funding for that portion. We're now to the design and build process. And we're looking for the approval from the town to move forward from the exploratory stage into the design and build stage of the project. And I can answer more questions if there's any.
I have a question.
Yes.
Why, are you under any type of time constraints that would make you want to do this at the special town meeting and not save it for the annual town meeting for the voters?
Yeah, so the way the timing worked out with the utility companies, we needed to go through both utilities, National Grid and Verizon, and do what was called pole inspections of all poles in town. There was thousands of them that needed to be inspected for line heights and functionality updates, make sure that everything was adequate. Those pole inspections, the quotes that is per pole, it's only good for a short amount of time from the utilities before they have to be redone again at an additional cost. We did present this at spring town meeting that we were currently bringing this back in the fall with that number.
Does anyone have any questions regarding Article two? Mr. Hatch?
Mr. Hatch. With all the major projects coming down the road that are far more important than fiber optics, are we sure we want to do this at this time? I have all fire patients, the senior center, the water system that's supposed to be updated, that's a big dollars there, and we want to do this too?
Right, I think what's missed in the conversation is we're not asking for this to hit the tax rate. The goal of this project is to build out the infrastructure and have the take rate get to a point where it sustains itself and it's self-feeding the system itself.
Well, I understand that part, but there's a face over here. People are going to look at the number and say, "Why?"
Right, I've been completely ready to answer those questions at town meeting. I've been putting out a lot of information. We did a community session where we approached those topics. There's all the information on our town website. We try to be transparent with it, I understand it doesn't get to everybody. So we have a presentation available for town meeting to answer those questions too.
And again, there is a whole section on the town's website devoted just to fiber optics program.
But it's still, it's big money.
No, I
Explains it's not paper, so people can look at the bottom line.
Line, and they're going to see
Just so you know, we're not asking for 8.5 million in bump tax rate. What we're doing, we're asking the treasurer to do what's called "Dan Borrow in Anticipation." And ways to do it is do short-term borrowing. And correct me if I mispronounce how I'm speaking, we won't be funding this project until it's complete, three to five years from now. During that construction, in the three to five years, we're going to be taking customers online. So it's going to be growing while it's being constructed. And by the end of the construction, is when we're hoping to have that 50% take rate. At that point there, it's self-feeding itself. And again, this is not happening for another three to five years. But this is just to give us that mechanism to move forward.
Okay, anyone else? All right, Article three, additional funding for the town administrator account. "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from unappropriated available funds a sum of money to increase the budget line of the town administrator account or take any other action relative thereto." Anyone?
Kathy, so this is typical, this is along with Article four, which is getting money for a search firm as well. So part of Bob's, you know, discussion with us is that you may need to offer more money than you've been paying me to get a competitive person. So we're taking that advice, throwing more money in. Plus, we have a quote, we have quotes from two different firms, of which we've chosen one, and this money will pay for the rest.
So basically, Article three and Article four, "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from unappropriated available funds a sum of money to increase line item 12.4 of the Board of Selectmen budget to hire a search firm to assist the town in recruiting a full-time administrator or take any other action relative thereto." So my understanding would be the recommendation under Article three is to increase the salary to make the search, I don't want to say easier, but prospective candidates may be a little bit more interested if the town is offering a little bit more money and Article four would authorize the Board of Selectmen to hire a search firm in order to conduct and wean out and hopefully present to you the best possible candidates.
Right.
Okay, does anyone have any questions? Yes, Mr. Motion?
What kind of budget is the town requesting for the unappropriated available funds?
908, what, 908 is it?
908, 999.
Any other questions? No. Oh, I'm sorry. So I'm going to move on to Article five, unless there's any other discussion regarding the hiring of a search firm or the increase in the salary for the town administrator to make that position more appealing to some potential candidates. Okay, hearing no other questions, we'll move on to Article five, community preservation projects. "See if the town will vote to appropriate or reserve from community preservation annual revenues in the amounts recommended by the Community Preservation Committee for community preservation projects, with each item to be considered a separate appropriation or take any other action relative thereto." A, to see if the town will vote to appropriate or reserve from community preservation annual revenues in the amount recommended by the Community Preservation Committee a sum of money for installation of a four-foot-high fence on both sides of the garage entrance on the south side of Academy Hall or take any other action relative thereto. And as you can see, that dollar amount is $3,300. And then B is to see if the town will vote to appropriate or reserve from community preservation annual revenues in the amount recommended by the Community Preservation Committee a sum of money for the rehabilitation of the Academy Hall fire escape. I'm not sure if we were able to change that dollar amount in time.
Yes.
We were, the $7,200?
Yeah, and it's in the motion.
Perfect. That is to pay for, not only the repair of the fire escape, but it also has to be certified and inspected. And that includes, that includes not only the repair, but the certification and the reinspection to make sure we're in compliance. I do know, based on my conversation with Doug Boyd, that the community preservation has already, has already approved this So it's just a matter of you agree at town meeting. Are there any questions regarding Article five? Yes.
Is that four-foot fence for safety, so someone doesn't fall?
I believe it is. I can defer to Doug.
Yes, that essentially is a, is a safety issue. You never know, after 150 years, somebody might actually fall in there.
It should have been written in for safety, like you did with fire. That's okay.
All right, any other questions? Okay. "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from unappropriated available funds a sum of money to increase the budget of the animal control officer or take any other action relative thereto." That's an additional $1,000 that they're looking to put into the animal control budget. The only information I have on that, to be quite honest with you, is we seem to be having a problem with beavers.
Yeah, no, this is to compensate for the expense of boarding a dog.
Oh, I thought it had something to do, I was told at the meeting last week, it had something to do with beavers. And
There's a, there's a wildlife item in the budget that's going to cover it.
Cover that, okay, I stand corrected, my apologies. All right, so I'm sorry, so it has to do with the boarding of dogs?
It's a dangerous dog that Shelley has had to board.
Okay. All right, any, any questions on that? For those of you who don't know Shelley, Shelley Sears is our animal control officer. Excuse me for a minute. All right, Article seven, Minnetoga Land Trust Project. "To see if the town will vote to acquire by purchase or otherwise from a previously appropriated sum of money a parcel of vacant lot on Zero Walnut Street, Hamden, Hamden County, Mass., as described in Hamden County Registry of Deeds Book, 7,900, page 443, containing approximately 14 acres, more or less. See also Book of Plans 49, page 62, and Book of Plans 95, page 67. Said purchase would be from Olga Masurino of 276 Wolf Swamp Road, Long Meadow. Personal representative of the estate of Anthony J. Masurino, Hamden County Probate Court Docket Number HD23P0324EA, and Minnetoga Land Trust for a purchase price of $59,000 to be managed and controlled by the Conservation Commission of the Town of Hamden in accordance with Chapter 40, Section 8C of the Conservation and Passive Recreation Purposes or take any action relative thereto." So I think this is more of a housekeeping issue than it is really anything else. The money's already been appropriated, but we neglected to include this subsequent motion when the money was appropriated so that the town could vote to take the land for the Minnetoga Land Trust. So this is not a money article at all.
We don't have to pay $59,000?
You do, you do not.
We already did.
We already did.
We had the other issues you have planned.
Don't shoot the messenger, Mr. Hatch, I'm just reading it.
I know, I didn't know that.
No, I understand. So the money's already been appropriated. And again, this is just somewhat of a formality. Okay, anyone else have any comments on this particular, on Article seven? Okay, Article eight, funding for a highway department tractor. "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from unappropriated available funds a sum of money for the purchase of a new tractor for the highway department or take any other action relative thereto." Okay, would someone from the highway department like to, or the selectmen like to speak to this issue?
I'll make the motion, but then I'll defer to Mark to give the explanation. Mark, we still don't want to wait for you to talk about potentially bringing it down with a trade-in or a smaller attachment?
We are, we are. And I'm still waiting on a number for the smaller attachment, which could save us potentially five to
No, worth it. Save it a bigger attachment, you're better off.
And then the trade-in too is either, it would be either a trade-in or, again, trying to put it on a municipal auction site. Might be able to get some more money for it than either a private sale or a trade-in. Trade-ins lately for any piece.
Do you think you'd have that number in the next week or is this more a not-to-exceed type thing?
I think, well, I think it'd be safe, it would be a not-to-exceed.
By the time the bills are done, we might be lucky.
Absolutely.
Would it be, I have, just have one question. Would it be fair to say that the reason why this wasn't brought up at the annual town meeting is because you didn't realize at that time that it needed certain parts that you were not capable of obtaining?
While, while it is, it is true that we're having some difficulty locating parts for both the current attachment and the tractor. The real reason why I had asked permission to bring this to special town meeting was a matter of timing. The tractor itself is about three to four months out. The attachment that we're looking at for the, for the tractor is six months out at least.
Okay.
So essentially, if this were to pass Fall Town Meeting and I was to order it, there's a chance I could see that April of 2024 to begin next year's season. If I pushed it off to Annual Town Meeting and, you know, and then I ordered it, I essentially wouldn't see that till the end of the year, in which case I would lose all of next year's roadside mowing. And just to mention too, that to rent a tractor of comparable size with comparable functions, it's about $2,500 a week.
Okay.
So, the main reason is
Timing, gotcha. Okay, does anyone have any comments or questions regarding Article eight?
Go with the bigger attachment.
Yeah. I would, just stay with the original, stay with the original design.
So just to be clear, the attachment that I had priced was a 74-inch flail, drop-down flail style attachment. The smaller attachment is a 60-inch. Would be a little cheaper, would keep us closer to the edge of the road. So I can, I can still get a price and mull that out with the Board of Selectmen.
That's fine.
I agree with Andy and Peter. Look, if you can afford to get the attachment you need for the job.
Okay, your smaller attachment must get taken one or two jobs. So along with the bigger attachment, it's going to save the town money anyways.
Sell the old one here, and I'll fix it somehow.
Okay. Article nine, additional funding for the fire department brush truck. "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from unappropriated available funds a sum of money for the local match for a FEMA grant for the purchase of a new brush truck for the fire department or take any other action relative thereto." Someone from the fire department here to speak to that, or, hi?
Hi, Ed Coolen, Fire Chief. We applied for the grant over a year ago. We asked the, you know, town to, for the match and then we shot for the truck and found out the cost of the truck has inflation gone up. Come back to town to ask for more funds to purchase the truck we need.
So the total amount you're asking for is $34,000?
No, 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 it's in the new, handout tonight.
I'm sorry, I have, let's have an old one.
It's 42.6.
Yep, I have an old one, all right.
And in the motion also, the $10,952 should be 39 cents after that, the local match.
Yep.
That's missing. And with the, with the FEMA grant, part of the grant is that we have to auction off or sell the old brush truck, which has a value of $5,000 to $15,000.
All right, does anyone have?
I just want to make sure I understand the numbers here. The 10,952 is what was appropriated in Article 13 of the annual town meeting. The 42.6 is on top of that or replaces that?
On top of that.
Okay, thank you.
It changed, if I can.
Sure.
So you're looking at a total change of 52, 53, 53, 4? Yeah, 53, 4, 54.
Well, the 10,952 was previously appropriated.
Right, it was appropriated in May.
Right, so Right, so.
You're only asking for nine.
You were looking for a change.
A 42.6.
Change from what we were, the FEMA grant, the additional FEMA grant of another 54, 55,000 round numbers.
The FEMA grant would be $219,047.06. Sixty-two months.
Right. But it was no, it was no change to the original, I'm going to say the original design, but the original cost that we were.
So originally, we got a grant for X number of dollars, and the FEMA says, you must show a match to go forward. And once the town approved a match, you can go forward and start looking at the design you need for the truck. And so you came up with an amount for a truck, and I'm sure it's a great truck, but you made the point where you're going to be, the total cost of the truck is $278,000, based on which we're paying 50.
So if you look, I was going to say, if you look at the original truck design that was written in there, we went with most of that whole design, except we had to change down the extended cab, where the truck would be sitting outdoors with water in it, which soon as winter happens, the trucks jump. So that's, other than that, everything that was originally on that grant was added. The few other pieces that we stepped up and changed after we went and saw some of the other trucks is safety. Like Sturbridge had, Sturbridge, that's the truck we sort of looked at, Sturbridge, they had a lot of their stuff on the top. We did not want to climb on top of a eight-foot truck and have someone fall off the top of it. So we had to move it down to the compartments, which changed.
So what's the total cost of it now? 270?
272, 272, $600.
So on almost $300,000 truck, the town's going to pay $53,000. Can you get our cruisers on that same deal soon?
They'll be red.
The other piece of this truck is, this truck is getting more universal for the town as well. Instead of sitting there like our other brush truck does, right, Eddie? Couple months out of the year?
Yep, this is Andrew Netherwood. He's on the Truck Committee, Peter Hatch is on the Truck Committee. They spent a lot of time going over this truck, designing it, so it'll be, also to answer questions. I think, Andy, you're still going to do the?
Yeah, we're going to come up, I think we'll.
We'll open a small PowerPoint, like five pages to inform people.
Housely pictures?
Where we, like a timeline of where we started, where we came from, stuff.
Perfect, thank you. Okay. Article 10, funding for new defibrillators and AEDs to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from unappropriated available funds, a sum of money to replace defibrillators slash AEDs, or take any other action relative thereto. Someone here to speak for Article 10, or?
I think we have a total of 12, of which nine need to be replaced.
Okay.
So that's kind of where we are. They're good for only so long, and you can't upgrade them, you can't change, so.
Okay. Anyone have any questions on, on that?
In the Spring Town Meeting, we allocated, I think, something like $15,000 or, create $5,000. So is that $5,000 being used for purchase or instead of maintenance?
There are still some of the ones, don't make me say the word, we did, that aren't being replaced. So part of that money will go for their continued maintenance as well, and the rest will go towards buying the maintenance plan for the units as well. That's what the chief says. He'll be there to explain at the town meeting. Mark Scott, and he can say it.
Article 11, additional funding for the Hampden Master Plan. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from unappropriated available funds, a sum of money as a local match for a $75,000 grant from the Commonwealth to update the town master plan, or take any other action relative thereto. John?
So they're not here. They want, someone up, they had a quote, they asked at the Annual Town Meeting, could the town buy the extra 57,000, I think it was. The town said no. They want to take another bite at the apple and see if free cash can be used to fund that there. We might make another presentation. There is no co-adjusion against bringing an article back. The exclusion, help me, is only zoning changes, the two-year moratorium, right? Yes. So therefore, we may have some disagreement with that effort, but we also give credibility to elected boards. They're allowed to submit articles for the town meeting.
Okay.
And it's up to them to, just like Mark, or try and sell a tractor, they can get up and try and.
I guess the question I wanted to ask, and perhaps you've already answered it, is this was voted down at the Annual Town Meeting, and to take another bite at the apple, to quote you, at a special town meeting where there's less likely to be the same number of people after the voters already said no. That, that is a concern of mine. So I just, I just wanted to throw that out there.
I'm sure, I think part of the rationale was that, that was a raise and appropriate, and this would be out of free cash, commercial free cash, it must be used to, you know.
Right.
Offset the raise and appropriate, so anyhow, we'll see you next Monday.
Right, okay. Article 12, report of the Government Study Committee to see if the town will vote to hear an interim report from the Government Study Committee, or take any other action relative thereto. Anyone wish to speak to, I mean, this is not a money article, this is just to let us know that we are going to be hearing from the Government Study Committee at the Annual Town Meeting. Anyone have any questions or anything before I move on?
Your pen is not here, is it?
No, nearing none.
They have a brief presentation, which I received today.
Okay, thank you. Article 13, authorization of a pilot for ground-mounted solar. To see if the town will vote pursuant to general law, Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 45, to authorize the Board of Selectmen to negotiate and enter into a payment in lieu of tax pilot agreement with a lessee operator of the solar photovoltaic energy generating facility to be developed at the rear of Summers Road, parcel ID 02-004-000, upon such terms and conditions as the Board of Selectmen shall deem to be in the best interest of the town, or take any other action relative thereto.
Now, the assessors are here, basically, they're going for a different chapter than they had before for the, it's the Potash installation, I believe, right, right, on Potash Hill. So they're going to go for a different tax structure than the town had previously approved.
Okay.
That's all.
Anyone have any questions?
One of the assessors will be having to stand up and explain.
Okay.
This is a rear of Summers Road, not on Potash.
Yeah, it's the one, the Janelle Park concert, is that correct?
Yeah, that was the description.
Well, the description here is wrong.
No, the description here is correct, because that's what was approved by the planning board, okay? The description was rear of Summers Road. So that was what was described and approved. Yes, so that description is correct. How they accessed it, or how you're saying it, at the Potash.
I understand where it is, everybody's saying, this, they would not take this location?
All the conservation documentation and everything, the D P, everything is Summers Road. Rear Summers Road, yes.
Or the wrong.
No, not that. The frontage is on. The frontage to the. Correct. Is that Summers? But you can't get it through.
Because I was assuming you wanted to go to Martin Farms, which is on Summers Road.
Okay, we'll let them explain.
I know where it is.
I'm sure, yeah, I'm sure it's recorded somewhere, that people can, can double-check if they're.
A lot of the check clears, Kathy, we don't care where.
Yeah, well, all right. Article 14, Article 15, Article 16, and Article 17, all have to do with capital requests from the school district. And you have each of those dollar amounts in front of you. I do want you to, just as some background information, know that the district did want to originally put these articles at the Annual Town Meeting, and it was at the request of the Wilbraham Finance Board and the town, and our town's Advisory Board, that they hold off and wait till the Special Town Meeting to see if we had free cash or that kind of thing, because the budget was in such, in a state of fluctuation even going into the Annual Town Meeting. And so the school committee decided to accept the request of both boards and, and hold off and wait to the annual, I mean, to the Special Town Meeting. Doug, did you want to add something?
No, that's, I mean, this is what was discussed with the Regional School District in the spring, and so we're just doing what we said we were going to do.
Right, so I do want you to know, yes, Rita?
I have a question that I had intended to ask at the annual.
Okay.
Never got to it, but it was, at the time, Carol Fitzgerald mentioned on two separate occasions at that meeting, that Doug had come up with an ingenious plan, because Wilbraham was tight with money, and I'm wondering if this was part of that ingenious plan?
I don't think so, but Doug, I don't want to speak for you, genius.
Well, I appreciate the ingenious plan, but all I did was facilitate the discussions between the Wilbraham Finance Advisory and the School District on the operational budget. And part of that discussion was removing these capital items from the operational budget request and segregating for separate consideration. So that's what these are, Rita, these are, these are, actually, three of the, three of these are articles that were deferred from the spring. One of them is, they switched out one issue, and I don't remember offhand which one it was, but this is all part and parcel of that discussion.
And then a follow-up question is, is Hampden's portion of the regional budget still based on our percentage of students?
Yes.
In the school system?
Yes, yes.
Yes, as, as of, as of the census of October 1, is what determines what the allocation is between the towns. And our, our allocation as of October 1 of last year dropped below 20%.
Thank you.
Yes, okay, yes.
Will there be someone from the Regional School District to explain these?
I'm going to go through them in just a moment, I just wanted to, but yes, I'm assuming that there will be someone from the Regional School District present at our Annual Town, I mean, at our Special Town Meeting, but I do want you to know, and I'm sure you may already be aware, Wilbraham's Special Town Meeting is tonight.
Right.
And so these articles, these capital requests are going to appear on their warrant just as they appear on ours, as four different, four separate capital improvements. Okay, so I'll, having said that, let me just go through them for you. Article 14, Hampden-Wilbraham Regional School District Capital Requests. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from unappropriated available funds, a sum of money for capital improvements to the boiler heat exchange of the HVAC system at Minnetoga Regional High School, or take any other action relative thereto. Now, what I've been told is that the boilers had a warranty of 10 years, and now they're 12 years old. So the warranty has expired. Having said that, what I'm looking for quickly in my paperwork is the total cost, which I don't have, but this is just our share. So the, the heat exchanges, there's four boilers apparently at Minnetoga Regional High School. The heat exchanges on one of the boilers that they need to get the parts for is located on the second floor. Regrettably, the only way to access that boiler is to go through the roof. So they have to go through the roof to take out the old exchanges, as well as to put in the new exchanges, which is why our portion would be $24,917. And I can tell you that Wilbraham's portion is 100, is over $100,000. Okay? All right, so, does anybody have any questions? Yes?
I got a question on this.
Yes.
So this school's about 12, 15 years old?
12.
And this is the exact same problem when I was in Minnetoga, when it was the old school, and I froze for an entire year that they put a Cleaver Brooks boiler in, which is supposed to be good for 90 years. Five years later, they came back and said, we need a new school because the boilers shot, the brand-new one they put in. I do boilers, I taught it at school and everything. Why are we looking at a 12-year-old boiler? Who is holding the school department accountable? Because this is ridiculous.
Well, I don't.
Even the one in your house doesn't even fail this soon.
I'm not sure that it's the school department, more so than the people who are on whatever committee to build Minnetoga Regional High School.
And I brought all this up at that town meeting, going that, and who are we going to hold accountable for?
Okay.
Because of this. So my question is, I believe the Town of Hampden and the Town of Wilbraham need to create two facility departments that work together, and we oversee the facilities and making sure the money's spent, and this stuff is taken care of, not only on the town buildings here, professional people do it, but it should also be to review the school department. So we're not out here spending, wasting money on this, just like the $5,000 for the mini splits here. I mean, I wish I could put that in my house for that price, but.
Be, all right.
Kathy, can I make a point here?
Sure.
So I was told that the first three articles passed, and the fourth one failed.
Okay.
So the fourth one, the camera system.
Okay.
Since they failed, we should take no action.
On Article 17, okay.
But just to add on to that, I mean, we had the problem with the school lights, we've had all kinds of problems at this building.
You realize there's nobody here from the school to listen to what you're saying? You realize there's nobody here from the school to listen to what you're saying?
No, I'm just saying, I think the town as a whole, we should think about a facilities committee that oversees this stuff and makes sure these funds are spent here, not transferred off to someone else's little project at the school department.
I can tell you that both Doug and myself do serve on a subcommittee, along with members from the school department, the superintendent, as well as members of the Wilbraham Finance Board, and Doug, correct me if I'm wrong, but we do get a pretty detailed accounting of where the money goes and how it's spent, is that correct?
Four times since I've been here.
Yes, I mean, we, we can ask for as much detail as we would like. Now, let, let me just add that the reason that we're bringing these capital items forward is because the old Minnetoga was not maintained as it should have been. The maintenance kept being deferred, and the, when that new school was built, one of the promises that was made to the, to the citizens was that this building would not suffer the same fate. In other words, we would keep this building maintained correctly. Now, this is not fun money to spend. This is about as much fun as putting a new roof on your house. But this is what's necessary to keep this building up to snuff, so it doesn't suffer the same fate that the old one did.
But this is telling me it's a 12-year-old boiler. This is lack of maintenance.
Look, I don't disagree, I don't disagree with you. I didn't install the boiler, I don't know anything about boilers, except I've got one. All I know is that the boiler that was installed had a 10-year warranty from the date of purchase, not from the date of putting it into use, but from the date of purchase, had a 10-year warranty. had a 10-year warranty. We're outside of it. Now, you know, is there more to look into there? Perhaps. And I'd welcome you to contact our school representatives and bring it up with them.
Article 15, oh, yes.
There's, you said there were four.
I believe that's the case.
We may be up against, sorry. There's a possibility.
I, I'm not going to say, "Oh, no, that's not going to happen," because I don't have a crystal ball, but, you know, it, it may happen.
Absolutely.
And hopefully, if it happens, it'll be on the first floor, and they don't have to do anything through the roof. But we'll see, okay.
If they want to put it in.
Article 15, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from unappropriated available funds a sum of money for capital improvements to the split units of the HVAC system at Minnetoga Regional High School or take any action relative thereto. I do want to just let you know, the split units, our, our contribution would be $5,980, and Wilbraham's was a little over $24,000. Students, not only students with special needs, but students who may have some physical disabilities and have what's called an I E P, an individual educational plan, may have written into their plan, because maybe my child has acute asthma or some other chronic pulmonary disease or respiratory disease, rather. It's written into the I E P that they have to be in a classroom environment that has air conditioning, okay? This is what this request is for, is so that they can comply with the individual education plans, the I E Ps for students, because they are binding legal contracts, okay? So, I just wanted to give you just a little bit more information than what just appears on the warrant. Okay, anyone have any questions about Article 15? Okay, Article 16, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from unappropriated available funds a sum of money for the purchase of classroom projectors and monitors for the Minnetoga Regional High School or take any other action relative thereto. That, again, you know, classroom projectors and monitors, as a retired public school teacher, they're invaluable. Many students, and I'm not speaking from the standpoint of the advisory committee, this is just my own personal opinion, having lived this, you have many students who are visual learners, not just textbook learners, and we were late to the party, giving our, giving our students individual Chromebooks to use, where East Long Meadow had them, I don't know, eight, nine years, every student had their own Chromebook. Hampton and Wilbraham didn't do it till COVID hit. So, we are, I think it's incumbent upon our, and maybe I should save this for the floor of town meeting, yeah, to make sure that our, our students are getting a competitive education, so. Anyone have any questions about that one?
What's the cost?
Oh, the cost, it would be $10,764.51 as Hampton's share, and Wilbraham's is $43,235. And based on what John just said, you know, these three, yes.
I just want to make a point, as part of schools, but in my district, this is something that should be inside of the budget. I don't know why it's outside. That's, that's my only thing.
Okay.
You know, we replace tables and chairs as part of your overall budget every year. And I can never recall a question coming to our board, and Doug was on the school committee, that this just wasn't in, "Okay, this year, we're going to get two new projectors, next year, we're going to get two new, next year." Why isn't it part of the annual? That's all.
Technologies, it's a depreciating asset.
Because Doug, Doug came up with the ingenious piece of putting it off till the fall.
Right. Doug, we just blamed it on you.
That's not my point.
No.
From the spring. I was more like, why isn't even there a given? Why isn't in your budget? I understand they're trying to keep the budget tight, and maybe they had to say, "Well, we'll move this out to try and keep our overall increase down." But I think, I just can't recall this type of thing ever being asked for as a special capital request. Capital request to me is, "Get some of the boiler, I got no problem with it," because that's not something you'd see on a potential annual basis, except back to your maintenance board. But if it fails, it's a capital thing, sure.
Okay.
Personal opinion.
All right, Article 17, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer.
Just quickly, Kathy, quickly, hey.
I'm sorry.
Before you move on to John's point, we, the budget subcommittee is actually having discussions about what constitutes capital, because the, the goal is to have regular capital requests coming for the high school, specifically for the high school. And that, part of that process is defining what constitutes capital. So, we're aware of that issue, we actually had that same discussion with regards to the mini splits. They're arguably an operating cost as opposed to a capital cost. So, we're aware of that, you know, our representatives on the school committee are aware of it, and I think we'll see a little bit more definition of what constitutes capital as we go forward.
Everybody good? Okay, Article 17, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from unappropriated available funds a sum of money to update the camera system at Minnetoga Regional High School or take any other action relative thereto. That dollar amount is $14,950.71, and Wilbraham's would have been $60,050. I can't really speak to that, I mean, we'd have to leave it.
Well, they turned it down.
No action on this, Kathy.
I'm sorry, Doug?
No action.
No action on this article.
No action. Okay, reducing the tax rate, you know, Article 18, Article 19, these are all boilerplate things that we have, and to be quite honest with you, not having voted on the other 17 articles, the advisory committee won't make any recommendations to the floor of town meeting on Monday. Does anyone else have any questions or concerns or anything they'd like to bring up before Mr. Hatch?
How much is in the general fund?
How much is, is in the general fund? You mean, our, how much do we have to spend?
Well, how much do we have in savings?
Oh, in savings, we have, in our stabilization account, we have over $2 million. No? So, yes. All right, well, thank you all for coming, and we'll, we'll see you next week. And that said, the public hearing is hereby adjourned. Thank you very much for coming, all of you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy.